We are now streaming live to Facebook.
Larry, you can go ahead.
Okay. Pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, included in Public Act Number 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. Under authority granted to me on March 17th, 2020, I issued a declaration of emergency to address the health threat posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. On June 15th, 2020, I executed a written determination that given the ongoing emergency associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent. On April 30th, 2021, Governor Pritzker issued his most recent disaster proclamation, an executive order 2021-09. That declared in-person attendance at public meetings of more than 10 people at the regular public meeting location to be infeasible in accordance with the Open Meetings Act as amended by Public Act 101-0640. In accordance with the above actions, I have also determined that in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. Accordingly, this village board meeting is being conducted virtually with members participating through the Zoom webinar platform. I am currently present in the Village Hall Council chambers as required by the Open Meetings Act. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Miller. Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vry.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. As noted, today's village board meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software and is being audio-recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page in compliance with state law. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. To help facilitate this meeting, members of the public are muted and should remain muted during the meeting. After each agenda item is presented, I will ask each trustee if they have any questions or comments. I will call the trustees in alphabetical order. As required by law, I will ask for a roll call vote rather than voice votes on any agenda item requiring a vote. Our first order of business is consideration of the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting, Committee of the Whole Meeting on April 15th, 2021 at 5:00 PM, and the Board of Trustees' regular meeting on April 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Does any trustee have any questions or comments that they want to make on the minutes? Not hearing any. May I have a motion to adopt these minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
Thank you. In accordance with the supplemental rule the Board approved on April 16th, 2020, here is how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. In a moment, I will ask that the Assistant to the Village Manager, Jordan Lester, read the public comments received on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to this meeting. The public comment on agenda items, if any, will be read when each of those items on the agenda is discussed. Jordan, would you please read the public comments on non-agenda items, if any?
Yes, we have received public comments on non-agenda items and agenda items. And I will begin with our non-agenda items. The first public comment that we received this evening is from Mr. David Elzy at 373 Hazel Avenue. And for the record, Mr. Elzy submitted both email and voicemail commentary, but they are of the same information. So I will read his email commentary. Dear Board of Trustees, this matter does not appear on the agenda, yet is impactful for many. I live in the Beale Properties Apartments, and along with most all homeowners and residents surrounding the outside, proposed outside dining patio of Poppy Social New Restaurant, we have a respectful, yet direct question for you. Would you be personally okay with the following elements being 30 to 50 feet from your home, backyard, family, children, bedroom, or home office? The proposal for an outdoor beer garden-style patio behind the new Poppy Social Restaurant amidst homes and apartments is of grave concern for the following reasons. Elements of the proposal. Number one, 84 occupancy, very loud outdoor noise permeating the neighborhood. Number two, outdoor music to 11:00 PM, Thursday through Saturday, DJ, speakers, ping pong, other games. Number three, flagrantly contrary to the charm, tranquility, and nature of Glencoe. Number four, decreases surrounding home and property value. Number five, impacts families', children's bedtime, homework, sleep, and working from home. Number six, only 30 to 50 feet to all residences and homeowners on all three sides. Number seven, liquor served. Number eight, live music six times a year, literally mere feet from backyards and residences. Please consider not granting the right for this to impinge on the tranquility and mature nature of Glencoe's expressed character and charm. I am one of many who feel this concern. Respectfully and sincerely, David Elzy. The next public comment we received is as follows, and is from John Byrne. And John's public comment is as follows. Good evening, my name is John Byrne, and my wife and I own a home at 693 Greenwood Avenue in Glencoe. We have become aware of a proposal for a large outdoor patio as part of a proposed new restaurant at 668 Vernon Avenue called Poppy Social. The proposal, currently awaiting review by the Plan Commission next week, includes seating for up to 84 people, and according to drawing submitted, would include space for outdoor games and live music at least six times per year. As proposed, this patio would sit literally across a private alley from several residences, both single-family and multifamily buildings. In a letter to some nearby residents, Poppy's social owner said they would plan to operate the patio until 11:00 PM most nights. In the staff review memo relating mostly to appearance and design issues, there is passing mention as to how this patio would be an accessory use of the property and thus be permitted by Glencoe zoning code. I have requested from the village manager and planning staff whether a zoning certificate of compliance has already been issued for the project, but have not yet heard back. As you can imagine, the homeowners along Greenwood and Hazel that would be close to this patio are not happy. Neither are the tenants in the apartment buildings to the north and south of the proposed patio. Nowhere in Glencoe is there an eating establishment with a backyard entertainment patio that is mere feet away from people's bedrooms. Every eating establishment in the downtown area offered seating in the front, mostly on public property, it's worth noting. This would be the first such entertainment-oriented patio in our town. And it doesn't belong here. It belongs in Wrigleyville maybe, but not in Glencoe. While this matter is not currently before the village board, it definitely will be if staff in the Plan Commission don't put a stop to it. We hope it doesn't get this far. But if it does, rest assured that you will hear from many of us about how this particular proposal is not an acceptable use of this commercial property abutting a residential area. The village code specifically mandates that residential areas take precedence over commercial areas and matters concerning zoning and land use. The residents of Greenwood and Hazel Avenues are entitled to the peaceful enjoyment of their properties. Best, John Byrne. And then the third comment that we received this evening, although there are others for later in the meeting, is from resident Nicole Downey. Nicole's comment is as follows. I'm writing in to express my concern about an outdoor patio at 668 Vernon that is up for review by the Plan Commission on May 26th. This patio will back up against my home and stands to cause severe distress and nuisance to all residents on the street. Opening a 2,500-square-foot outdoor patio with seating for 84 people, large-scale bar games, and late-night dining, 11:00 PM, is decidedly not respecting the transition between downtown and the residential community. I am requesting that the patio be eliminated completely or that it be located at the front of the building like all other restaurants in the village. And President Levin, those were the non-agenda public comments that we received this evening.
Thank you. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencomeeting, that's singular, glencomeeting@villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words. Our next order of business is our Culture of Caring Moment. And Trustee Hallwax had agreed to provide this month's Culture of Caring Moment. Trustee Hallwax.
Thank you, President Levin. So tonight, I'm going to highlight a story that some of you might have read on Glencoe's social media. And I had planned to talk or thought about talking about May as Mental Health Month. Barbara already covered that at the last meeting, so I wanted to go a different route. So I'm going to mention this story as a theme of coming together. I'll say this because in a polarized world, that is made more so, in my personal opinion, by things like social media and the challenges of 15 months. I think it's rare when we seem to come together and all agree on anything, but what does that lead to? The longer that we stay apart or frayed, polarized, whatever word you want to use, the more that we can become tribal and the more that those differences can solidify. So this story highlights community and a sense of community of where we can all kind of come together and rally together. So the quick version of the story is, at my house, we have a duck that now comes and nests. And I don't know why she nests a mile away from the Skokie Lagoons, but she does. And then, as my wife was coming home from dropping off my eighth grader, she saw the duck walking down the street with eight ducks in tow. And I'm on a conference call with my boss, and I got to hang out and go try to make sure this duck doesn't get run over by cars on the street as she was walking towards Dundee. So I go racing down the street, and I find that Katie Sweeney from Public Works is already on somebody had already called, and she's already there. And a bunch of these ducks, turns out, four had fallen in the sewer gates. So Katie's there with these crying ducks, and it's kind of a god-awful horrible cry. And I went down Dundee to try to make sure these things didn't get run over, driving down with my hazards on. But in the meantime, everybody's stopping and talking to Katie. And as I went back, Katie switched, and Katie went and got this duck and the four that were remaining up and onto the sidewalk and made sure they got to the lagoons. Phil was kind enough. I didn't know what to do, so I bothered Phil. And Juan from Public Works came out and crawled deep into the sewer and came out with the ducks and basically saved their lives. Katie came back and took them to the lagoons and reunited them with their mother. So this story may seem kind of light, right? It may seem cute, but at the same time, this seemingly unimportant event, to some at least, you know, I saw something different. I saw at least 20 different people come and stop and want to help that were concerned. I saw an enormous amount of people ping me about this thing. And it made me realize that, you know, things like this break us out of our tribes. And it's a chance for us to come together, right? We can agree things are good. And it reminds us that the further that we can come together and pull aside differences, we start having these seemingly little agreements, and then we can build upon them and have more agreements and more agreements and have more in terms of civil discourse. And specifically to this group, I think, we have a chance and a way to continue to put Glencoe to have events and to have community things where we're able to get people together. Like Fourth Light or the lights on that Friday of Thanksgiving. And I think that these events are things that this group can have that brings community together. Because with this little story, I saw it, and I thought it was just a really fantastic thing. And it gave me, you know, just a really warm feeling that I think has been absent for a lot of the last 15 months. So while it's, again, it's not as maybe heavy as something I wanted to do. I thought that I wanted to share it and wanted to mention what I thought it meant for the community and village for us together and remind this group that we have a responsibility to continue to have, work with the village to continue to provide events for our villagers to get together and be a wonderful welcoming community.
Thank you, Joe. That was a great cultural caring moment, and I thank Joe for that. May I have a volunteer to do the cultural moment for our next village board meeting? I'm not hearing a volunteer yet. Is anybody there able to volunteer that would like to fill Joe's shoes for our next meeting?
I'm happy to do one.
There we go. Pete's, if Pete didn't say yes, I would have done it, but I'll cede to Pete.
Excellent. Thank you, Pete. You stepped in to save me. All right, our next order of business is reports of the committees. We did not have a committee of the whole meeting tonight, so I have nothing to report on that. But we did have a finance committee meeting on Tuesday. Trustee Vry, can you tell us what went on at our finance committee meeting?
And thanks, Larry. So we had a meeting on Tuesday, and we covered our normal business where we discussed the finances of the village. So far, so good for 2021. The village is off to a great start from a financial perspective. The village downtown activities within the village, from building permits to people eating at restaurants, to people shopping in the stores, are all contributing to a very good start to the year. We've rebounded really nicely after such a tough year in 2021. So hopefully this all continues, but so far, so good in terms of what's happening in town. The other thing that we discussed were, so the referendum for the bond issuance passed, which was great to see. And we started the discussion around how we'll use the proceeds from that bond sale regarding our community investment projects. And we started to lay out a timeframe for these things and what are the areas that we want to work on. And so it was the first round of discussing some of that. And then finally, there's the Recovery Act funds that will be coming to the village as a result of COVID. And so also began the discussion around how those can help rebuild some of the things that we need to work on within the village. And that was the extent of our meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Trustee Miller is not here this evening. But I will ask Phil to talk to us a little bit about the upcoming Plan Commission meeting next Wednesday, May 26th.
Correct. President Levin, that is the next upcoming Plan Commission. There was no Plan Commission meeting in April. There are several items on that agenda. All of them relate to the downtown. As you heard earlier this evening, one relates to exterior appearance review for the new restaurant at 668 Vernon. And we do anticipate that there will be a significant public comment with that. But that meeting will begin at 7:00 o'clock next Wednesday. It will be a virtual meeting, and the information for that meeting is available on the village's website. While I am here at Trustee Miller's normal reporting moment, since she was unable to join the village board meeting tonight because she is going to be walking her daughter down the aisle tomorrow, she asked that a brief note be read during the meeting, and I will take just a moment to do that. Trustee Miller writes, "It's been a privilege serving with Larry. To me, he's always been a symbol of loyalty and dedication and service of his fellow citizens. Glencoe has been fortunate to have such a man as president, and I am fortunate to call him my friend." Barbara Miller. So with that, I will conclude the Plan Commission report.
Very sweet of Barbara. All right, Trustee Hallwax, can you tell us what's going on with the Golf Advisory Committee, please?
Absolutely. So the Golf Advisory Committee met in person on Monday at the golf course. This is the first meeting we've had in person in over a year. It was, you know, quite normal and fun to actually see human beings again. Relative to last, if the rest of the trustees remember, the golf course was closed last April. So this year, we had it above-average temperatures, and therefore we had just a really great month. So everything I've got to report is really positive. So we had 1,800 rounds, and this exceeded our historic rounds by 1,000. So our revenue has exceeded budget by 111%. Something else worth noting is there's a centennial outing that's planned for August 13th. It's got a 1920s theme because it's the 100-year anniversary of the golf club. So there's a lot of fun things being planned for that. So if people want to put that on their calendar, it should be a great, great event. And I want to start providing more information on the Friends of the Glencoe Golf Club since it's up and running in a more regular fashion now. So we've been meeting monthly, as many of you know, and working with a fundraising consultant. So at this point, though, now we've got marketing materials that have been refined. They should be finalized next month. A prospect list has been divided amongst the board, and we are acting the potential donors. The clubhouse, or there is a clubhouse civic advisory committee that has been formed, and it has a chair who has been an active participant in our community. The centennial that I mentioned will be a chance to engage with potential donors. And also, some of the fees going towards the friends, or the proceeds are going towards our fundraising efforts. Right now, the current fundraising is at 12, just over 12,000, which includes 5,000 from a single donor. So we are early innings, but really starting to all come together so this can start to have some momentum. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Peter Mulvaney, could you give us a report on the Sustainability Task Force?
Yes, I can. So I want to emphasize, well, oh, did I forget to say that the Glencoe Sustainability Task Force is working very diligently to make Glencoe the most sustainable and desirable community in the galaxy and by default, the universe. We have had a couple of successes in this regard. This past month, or actually last weekend, we held our third annual Donate and Recycle drop-off event. Many of you were there. We had a lot of volunteer help. We saw 222 vehicles come to donate, so roughly 220 households participated in this event from Glencoe residents. And for those who don't know, I'm going to go into a little detail. We have quite a few partners helping us with this event. Working Bikes, right? They're the folks who take bicycles. We collected 32 bicycles that were donated to Working Bikes, which will be rehabbed. People will be trained on becoming bike mechanics, the wonderful organization. So 32 bikes. The Epilepsy Foundation drove away at the end of the day with a full 26-foot truck full of clothing and household goods. The Flat Can Recycling, that's an organization that collects aerosol cans to keep them out of the landfill, took away 42 aerosol cans. Lakeshore Recycling Systems was there with two 20-yard roll-off construction debris bins that were packed by the end of the day. Great thanks to Dave Mao and the other village staff that helped load those two bins, those roll-off bins. Evanston Rebuilding was there, and they collected a wide range of valuable household reusable items that they will refurbish and resell. And all of this is being kept out of the landfill, by the way. And App Electronics took in mountains of styrofoam and small electronic appliances for recycling. So a really great event. I don't know the total tonnage, but all of it will be kept from the landfill, and much of it will be kept from our spring cleanup day tomorrow, or next weekend, this coming weekend, whenever it is, this Saturday. Also, the Glencoe Sustainability Task Force has been working towards a no-idling campaign to reduce idling vehicles. So more on that to come. And very important, one of my pet projects, you know, is the Impeccable Campaign. Please put your hand up if you know what I'm talking about, the Impeccable Campaign. All right, so board members, we need to get active. Get on our website, Glencoe's website. Go to the Sustainability tab and click on the Impeccable link. This is an opportunity to choose your bird mascot, if you will. I think that's the wrong term. But choose your bird for Glencoe. That will represent Glencoe. That'll be a symbol for Glencoe. And it will be an objective for us to add conservation messages to protect the bird. There are 10 fabulous birds on the website that you can choose from. Everything from a great-horned owl to a yellow warbler to a hummingbird to, what else is on there? The oriole. So there's some wonderful choices. Please make your own selection. It will help guide future conservation efforts and give us another way to communicate with people about the importance of protecting the natural resources of Glencoe as well as the cultural feel of Glencoe that Joe spoke so eloquently about earlier in our culture of caring. This is all part of that story. Perhaps we should have ducklings on our list, but at the moment, they're not. So that's some of the work that the Glencoe Sustainability Task Force has been up to this past month. More to come next month. Please, we meet every Tuesday, the Tuesday after the board meeting. So next Tuesday, we will be meeting, and everyone is welcome. Super easy to join. Just click the link. Say hello.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you for all that you do with the Sustainability Task Force. You've been great. Last but not least, on our committee reports, Trustee Rubin, can you tell us what's been going on with the Community Relations Forum, please?
Yes, it's been a busy month for the Community Relations Forum. We had our first town hall meeting on the 21st of last month, at which we were talking about DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Matters, from the lens of various organizations. And we had four panelists. Dr. Catherine Wang spoke on behalf of the District 35. Bill Henson, the Executive Director of Family Service at Glencoe was there, as was Karen Edelson, who's the co-president, of course, of the Glencoe Historical Society, and a team of people, I'm happy to say, were there from Writers Theater, led, of course, by Michael Halbertson. And it was a really robust and interesting discussion, presentations and questions and discussion. And I don't believe it's up on the website yet, but when it does go up on the website, I strongly encourage all of you to take a little time and watch it. I think you'll be glad you did. We're planning our next town hall meeting sometime late in the summer. And in the meantime, we've also met to continue reviewing the current Glencoe Human Relations Ordinance. And as has been asked of our forum, we're reviewing it from the standpoint of making suggested revisions, modifications to it to bring back to this board to consider enacting as an amended and restated ordinance. And so we are continuing our efforts in that regard. We just met yesterday, and we'll be meeting again the first week of June.
Thank you, Garrett. Thank you, Garrett. May I have the village manager's report?
Certainly, Mr. President. Thank you. Uh, tonight, my report is going to be brief. I just want to mention a couple of things. The first being, um, we, I think, are all aware of the fact that just about a week ago, the Centers for Disease Control significantly updated its guidance for the use of masks, particularly for those who are vaccinated with one of the three vaccines for the COVID nineteen virus. I wanted to make mention of the fact that, uh, obviously the governor issued an updated order earlier this week that mirrors the, uh, guidance the CDC provided. Um, we are in the process here, uh, at the village and I, I should note that the village of Glencoe has never issued its own, um, mask order or anything of that nature for the community. We have followed the state's guidelines, uh, as well as the CDC's guidelines. But internally here at the village hall and with those visitors who, uh, do come into the building, we will be updating our signage and our, um, policies to mirror also those CDC and State of Illinois guidelines. Uh, I have had some outreach from members of our business community asking, uh, what they should do. We have been sharing information with them from the standpoint of, they have the ability still through, through the guidance issued by the governor to issue, uh, their own, uh, policies if they would like to maintain mask policies, um, while, uh, for those patrons that are inside their establishments, they can do so or, uh, choose to follow, uh, that guidance. So it is a, to some degree, a case by case basis. Uh, and I know some of our businesses have already relaxed those mask, um, uh, policies, uh, either from a corporate standpoint or from an individual standpoint. So I just wanted to make that, um, announcement. We will be putting in place our updated guidelines, um, on Monday, May twenty-fourth. And, uh, we'll continue to follow, uh, those guidelines as they evolve over the coming months. I did, I did check our, um, updated statistics this morning relative to, uh, percent of vaccinated persons in the village of Glencoe. We are over fifty percent at this point. For those who have received either both doses of Pfizer or Moderna or the single dose of Johnson and Johnson. And we're at about sixty-six percent of those who have, um, received at least one dose. Finally, related to this subject, the, uh, vaccination pod, um, events that I have talked about for the last several months. This was the partnership work between, uh, Mavis, the mutual aid box alarm system, uh, communities. There are about twelve of us, uh, that were hosting these events at Nutriers Northfield Campus since late February. Uh, this week we completed our last second dose clinic. We are going to, um, go on a bit of a hiatus at this point. Demand for those, uh, vaccines has started to trail off as they become more readily available from pharmacies and doctors' offices. Mass vaccination clinics are seeing fewer people. And while, uh, we're, we are ramping down at this point, we're going to continue to monitor, particularly as the FDA considers, uh, whether or not there will be the opportunity for children, uh, two to eleven, uh, to receive the vaccine later this year and whether there would be any value in us, um, utilizing that, those resources to provide those kinds of vaccination clinics. But just a, a really fantastic intergovernmental effort. About twelve thousand people were vaccinated through these, um, these events. Those folks were, many of those folks were frontline, uh, employees, uh, restaurant employees, frontline municipal employees, teachers, um, many of those, uh, individuals who we wanted to get the vaccine as quickly and as efficiently and as easily as possible. So really a great effort of these twelve communities. I'm very proud that our staff was intimately involved in it. Uh, and particular thanks to, uh, Carrie Lewandowski and our Public Safety Department. And Sharon Tanner, who did a lot of heavy lifting in terms of scheduling and management of that effort. But really, uh, we had, we had staff from every department participate, uh, in a volunteer capacity and, uh, just truly, um, a great effort all around. So, uh, we will, uh, reengage those if the need arises. And, um, for now, we will be grateful that we were able to do as much as we were, uh, since the latter part of February. The next thing I wanted to just make mention of real quickly is a couple of, um, shout outs and thanks to some staff who are leaving us. Margie Ziegler, who is, who was our financial analyst, uh, in the finance department. Today was her last day. Uh, she'd been with us for about ten years in various different roles. Um, she has moved on to another community and, um, we are just very grateful to Margie for all of her, uh, time and effort that she spent. She was responsible for payroll, uh, for a fairly complex organization. It is a thankless task, but we were very grateful for all the work that she did for us while in our service. Uh, and I also want to, uh, extend congratulations to our Assistant Finance Director Denise Joseph, who is soon to be leaving us for a promotion. She will be, uh, she has been named as the new Finance Director, uh, with the Village of Lincolnwood. Lincolnwood's gain is Glencoe's loss. Uh, we are going to miss Denise. She has, again, she's also been with us for about ten years in a variety of roles, uh, starting out in the village manager's office and moving into finance. And, um, uh, truly, uh, one of our, one of our rock stars on staff. And, uh, we are going to miss her very much, but we are very happy for her, uh, in this next step in her career. And, um, grateful for all that she's, uh, that she's accomplished, uh, in service to us here as an organization and to our broader community. So just some thanks to those two folks. And, um, uh, we are in the process of refilling those positions, uh, but we'll never be able to refill their, their place in our hearts. Uh, when they're gone, but thanks to them both. And, um, before I conclude, I just wanted to take one moment to be, uh, to extend my congratulations and gratitude, both to trustee Miller, who wasn't able to be here this evening, and to President Levin, both of whom, um, are, are stepping off the board. I had a unique experience with President Levin. We were both new in our positions at the same time. Um, and we really had an opportunity to, uh, grow into our positions together. I couldn't have done the work that I've done these past, uh, almost eight years without Larry's support, um, guidance, thoughtfulness and, uh, willingness to always pick the phone up, uh, at all hours of the day, which happens from time to time. It has been, uh, truly an honor and a privilege to work with you, Larry. We're going to miss you. All the staff, uh, extends their congratulations to you for, uh, all your service to the community and, and we're excited for your next step. I'll say some things about Barbara next month when she joins us, but, um, uh, as I conclude my report, I wanted to just say that. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much, Phil. I appreciate that. The first matter on the village president's agenda or report tonight is consideration of a proclamation declaring May twenty-second through May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one as National Safe Boating Week in the village of Glencoe. Uh, may I have, uh, a motion to adopt the proclamation?
No, Mulvaney.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
Thank you. The second order of business is consideration of a resolution supporting restoration of local government distributive funding to return it back to the amount that was originally agreed to when the income tax was adopted by the legislature. If there is no discussion of that, could I have a motion to adopt?
A move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Announce the vote.
Oh.
The motion passed.
The, both, both of the proclamations had motions that passed. So that that's clear. This is the point in our meeting where I would normally tell you the date and time when our village board will hold its next regular meeting. Tonight, however, in a few minutes, my successor will be sworn in. And I will, as they say, be history. So I wanted to pause for a few moments and reflect on the past twelve years. Four as an elected trustee and the last eight of them as your village president. I wanted to start by expressing my profound gratitude to my fellow residents for giving me the opportunity to serve you. For the past eight years, it has been my utmost privilege to serve our tremendous community as village president. I grew up in Glencoe and believed each day as I grew up that I was the luckiest person in the world to be growing up in such a wonderful community with its respect for all people and its welcoming and inclusive can-do character. I graduated Central School in nineteen fifty-four. And as I crossed the stage to receive my diploma that night, I wondered where I would be and what I would be doing in sixty to seventy years from that day. A timeframe to me at that time, which seemed like an eternity. Now I know I don't have to wonder any longer. Glencoe sent me out into the world with a sense of duty to leave this world a better place than I found it, including serving my community to repay the wonderful beginning it had given me. When I take my leave of office tonight, it will be the first time in well over twenty-two years that I will not be involved deeply in some level with the village governance. I am proud that over the last eight years, I and my fellow village board members have been able to re-envision the delivery of services to our residents with a long-term strategic approach that delivers high-level resident-centric services on an effective, cost-efficient basis devoted to maintaining this as the best community in America. I especially want to thank tonight all those whose tireless efforts have made my term as village president so successful. Starting with the outstanding village boards I have had the privilege to work with that have uncelesedly given of their time and effort to listen to our residents. They have worked with me as a team to collegially explore, discuss and create the policies that have driven excellent outcomes for our residents. I want to mention Barbara Miller, who could not be here tonight, but like me, after eight years on the board, is retiring tonight after distinguished service as Vice Chair of the Plan Commission and a member of the Board's Finance Committee. Also, I wanted to say thank you to my colleagues, Jonathan, Peter, Gail, Gary and Joe. A special thanks to you, to our outstanding village attorney, Steve Elrod, who has guided us so effectively through the complexity of all that we do. Especially, I also want to thank our phenomenal village staff at every level who have taken the board's strategic plans and policies and implemented them, integrating every facet into their day-to-day operations. Our village employees have taken the concept of being devotedly resident-centric and raised it to a new level. I cannot say enough about our village staff. Carissa Kirkman, my tremendous village manager, Phil Corrali, and Jordan, Dave Mao, Nikki and Denise, Sharon, my friend Carrie, Mary Saken, Katie Sweeney, Mike Talan, Don Kirk, Taylor Baxter, Alex Urbana Chuck, and so many, many more. I wish I had time to name them all. It has been my honor to work with every one of our dedicated village employees and try as best I could to help to see that each and every one of them, as part of our team to serve our residents, was successful. As I said, I have been blessed to grow up and serve in the Glencoe community that cares. And I want also to thank all our residents that have given their time to serve on our numerous committees and commissions that do so much to make our community better. We are truly blessed in Glencoe to have a government of the people for the people. As I have said, I lived in Glencoe for seventy years and in my present home for fifty-three years. I have raised my six boys in it. My wife says I don't do girls. Serving as your president has been the culminating experience of my life here. As I end my service and retire to a warmer climate of Tyler, Texas, the Rose Capital of the world, I will never forget that I grew up in Glencoe believing I was the luckiest person in the world to have the opportunity to live here. I always believed that it was my responsibility to give back through service to our community for the privilege of having grown up and lived here. So it is from the bottom of my heart that I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to do so. Thank you. With that said, it is sort of sad as I return to the finishing off of my duties. Thank you very much. The next order of business is our consent agenda. In, since we are doing this in a virtual meeting, I will ask our village manager, Phil Corrali, to read the titles of the items on the consent agenda. Phil, could you read those for us?
President Levin, I believe before I do so, there is an item on the consent agenda that relates to the certified landmark designation for Saint Paul AME Church and, uh, Reverend, Reverend Dwayne Gary is here this evening and he had asked if he could say just a word or two, um, related to that agenda item.
I had, I had planned to call on him once.
Okay.
But I think this is a good idea. I would love to hear from him now.
All right, one moment, please, as I, uh, promote Reverend Gary to our panelist. One second. We also, I believe, have some parishioners from Saint Paul AME in attendance as well this evening. So, hi Reverend Gary, we can see you.
Hello, everyone. Uh, first to President Larry and to our village manager Phil and to entire board on behalf of Saint Paul. Uh, we come on today because today, uh, we seek a opportunity to make Saint Paul a historical landmark. And if you don't mind, if I can just wait until after it's done to make a statement.
Okay, that would be fine.
President Levin, I will read the items of the consent agenda then. Uh, all right, item seven A, April twenty-twenty-one, Vision, Village Treasures Report and Glencoe Golf Club Financial Report. Item seven B, April twenty-twenty-one Check Register for the Village of Glencoe and the Glencoe Golf Club. Item seven C, Ratification of the April twenty-twenty-one Early Check Register List. Item seven D, Consideration of a Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement for Coronavirus Relief Funds with Cook County. Item seven E, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the Illinois Public Reserve's Investment Management Trust as an authorized financial institution for village funds. Item seven F, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the Village Manager to Accept an Accounting Credit from Tyler Technologies Incorporated and Increasing the Calendar Year Twenty-Twenty-One Authorized S A A S Fee Contract Amount to a hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and an ordinance making supplemental appropriations and amending the general fund budget in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand for the calendar year twenty-twenty-one budget. Item seven G, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the Village Manager to Execute an Engineering Services Agreement with Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for the Dell Longwood Sanitary Sewer Analysis. Item 7H, Consideration of a Resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a seven-month extension of the professional services agreement with H.R. Green of McHenry, Illinois for Plan Review and Inspection Services. And finally, item 7I, Consideration of an Ordinance Establishing Certified Landmark Designation of the Structure at 336 Washington Avenue as recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission, also known as St. Paul AME Church.
And since Dwayne Gray had asked me, Gary had asked me to call him back to say a little something after we've gone through adopting it. I will do that once we've gone through the process of adopting the consent agenda. Since this is the main agenda for items, I'm going to go through and ask each trustee if they have any questions with respect to it or any comments. And I will start with Joe Hallwax. Any questions, comments, or thoughts on the consent agenda? Okay, if none, Gail listener, any thoughts, questions, comments?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Peter Mulvaney.
Just a quick clarification on the Tyler accounting invoice issue. I guess I want to make sure that this invoice change didn't occur over multiple invoices that we then later tried to rectify. And also, it sounds like we're getting some kind of credit, but I didn't understand the need to elevate the cap on the Tyler contract.
I can certainly answer some of that, trustee Mulvaney. First of all, these are not new dollars. I want to underscore that. We are utilizing resources. Well, we are, these are resources that have been budgeted in previous budgets, but were not expended. There were some issues that we were working through with Tyler relative to their billing timeline. And so that, this has been a rather lengthy process. I'm going to ask Finance Director Larson to just jump in and make sure I'm not misspeaking on any of these points. But I did want to just underscore, none of these are new dollars. They're dollars that were not spent in previous fiscal years.
You are correct, Manager Corrali. So to clarify the adjustment, when we were originally signing the contract with the software vendor, we had tentatively agreed to pay for software license fees for several years. Because of the delays that we experienced in implementation, some of those modules did not go live. So there was a dispute between the village and the software company of whether or not those fees needed to be paid. Since we weren't using them, they've issued a credit against that outstanding invoice. So we are accepting that credit. The adjustment to the budget is really just to allow us to pay off those invoices that are outstanding in the current year. Because they were budgeted in prior years, though that authority for us to pay that has lapsed. So we need to adjust the current year budget to allow us to pay what is actually due and outstanding.
Thank you. No other question.
Thank you, Peter. Trustee Gary Rubin.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jonathan Vrie. Okay, since there are no further questions or comments, may I have a motion to adopt all of the consent items? Did I hear a second?
I think, yeah, okay.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Unanimously, Karen. Okay, now, the one item on there that is very near and dear to my heart is the consideration that we just adopted, i.e. the ordinance establishing the landmark status for St. Paul's. And I would ask Reverend Gary if he would like to say a few words.
Yes. Once again, on behalf of St. Paul, we want to say thank you for this opportunity. Let me first say to our president, who is ending his term, to President Larry for zippifying what the community pledge is all about. From day one, since I arrived as the pastor of St. Paul in Glencoe in 2017, he personally reached out to me. We had lunch. He shared many things about Glencoe, some history about St. Paul, and some personal things about him and his wife. From that day forth, we have developed a working friendship and a lifetime friend. I'm so glad I had an opportunity to meet him and to work with him and saddened that his term is over with. But I do look forward to working with our incoming President Howard as we build a communal relationship. To Phil and to all of our village staff who is here on today, I say thank you for your listening ear. Thank you for guidance. Thank you for your wisdom and direction as we continue to build our community to be a beloved community. I'm so thankful about this opportunity, and it just reminds me about what's going to take place on this coming Sunday. In the Christian calendar, it is Pentecost Sunday. In the Book of Acts, the second chapter, it talks about 120 people being together in one place on one accord. And because they were there together, the Holy Spirit unified them, and that community grew. It grew to 3,000. What does that mean today? It means that we, the congregation and community, the village board, the president, as we come together in one room, touching and agreeing on one accord, the unity of the spirit comes together so that the community can become beloved. We are coming together on one accord from one agenda tonight, and I want to say thank you because it will benefit not only St. Paul. It will benefit not only the Homer Wilson family lineage, but it also represents the community of Glencoe. Glencoe, St. Paul, in Glencoe is the first and only African-American church. And you're about to make it the first church to receive such an honor. I want to say thank you for letting us all touch and agree today that we might all grow this community to be beloved. Thank you so much, and I turn it back over to each and every one of you.
Thank you, Dwayne, very much for those thoughts. All right. Does any trustee have any business or other issues they wish to bring before the board tonight?
Hey Larry, it's trustee Mulvaney. I wanted to also just echo the thoughts and the thanks for all of your time and effort with the board. It's been great working with you. I have learned a lot from you. And best wishes to everything going forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Peter. I appreciate that. All right. Jordan, are there any other public comments that came in that we need to read this evening to the board?
Not at this particular time. There will be more for later.
Okay. That brings us to really the conclusion of the first portion of our agenda for this evening. And so we're at that point where I would ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting with respect to the first portion of the agenda, Sina Di. And I would say to all of you that I feel from the very bottom of my heart that it has been a great privilege to serve and work with you. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I'm moved.
May I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Phil, would you read the roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie. All right. We have some logistical changes that will happen that are odd in a virtual environment, but we will be, the first, next item that will happen is I will be going into the council chambers to swear in President-elect Rowan as the, in my role as the village clerk. Trustees Rubin and Listener, as well as trustee-elect Underdonk, will be sworn in by then-President Rowan in a few moments. We did email out to the three of you your oath to help in case there are some odd feedback issues as that process is taking place.
Steve, could you let Phil know that we need to turn on the camera for that, for that one, please? We can see them. Steve, I don't know if we can hear them.
Can you hear me?
I can hear it. It's just kind of faint.
It's very faint.
Yeah, I agree. It's very faint.
Is there any particular order?
Yes, let's do the declaration.
All right, so first I'm going to sign the declaration of emergency.
Phil, do you want to go to me?
The intent.
We're swearing.
The first item of business for me is to swear in the newly-elected trustees. And so when I read this, please repeat after me. I, and then state your name.
I, Gary Rubin.
Having been elected village trustee.
Having been elected village trustee.
In the village of Glencoe and the county of Cook and the state of Illinois.
In the village of Glencoe and the county of Cook and the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Rubin. Okay, Gail, are you next?
Okay, I'm ready.
I, state your name.
I, Gail Listener.
Having been elected village trustee.
Having been elected village trustee.
In the village of Glencoe and the county of Cook.
In the village of Glencoe and the county of Cook.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Gail.
Thank you very much, Howard.
Dudley, you're up. I, state your name.
I, Dudley Underdonk.
Having been elected village trustee in the village of Glencoe.
Having been elected village trustee in the village of Glencoe.
In the county of Cook and the state of Illinois.
In the county of Cook and the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Dudley.
Thank you.
And congratulations to all three newly-elected to additional terms. Thank you. I think we should now officially seat the new village board, and I'll request a roll call of the new village board. And village manager Corrali, if you could read the roll call, please.
Certainly, President Rowan. Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdonk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We are, as with the prior meeting, we're meeting virtually We are, as with the prior meeting, we're meeting virtually via Zoom webinar software, and the meeting is continuing to be audio-recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page in compliance with state law. The village manager, the village attorney, and I are present at Village Hall. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. Now's the time for the public comment, and at this time, I would ask the assistant to the village manager, Jordan Lester, to read the public comments received on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting. Public comments on agenda items, if any, will be read when we reach that item on the agenda.
Thank you, President Rowan. We have one public comment on a non-agenda item, and then we have more public comments for regular business. The public comment for non-agenda items for the second half of the meeting comes from resident Andre Lerman at 244 Hazel Avenue, and Andre's comment is as follows. "To the board, I would like to, I would first like to extend congratulations to the newly-elected and returning board members and the new village president who are taking the oath of office tonight. Congratulations to all four of you on your accomplishment. As a resident of the village, I truly appreciate your interest and dedication to volunteering to serve the community and look forward to your contributions to the community. To departing President Levin and trustee Miller, thank you for your eight years of service, for your overall leadership, and for your advocacy for the village of Glencoe. I would like to take a minute or so to talk about the newest incoming member of the village board, trustee Dudley Underdunk, with whom I served two overlapping years on the Glencoe Park District Board of Commissioners. Dudley had a major impact on the park district and its board in time, in his time as commissioner. He was vice-president in my last year of office and then became president of the board and also served as treasurer, a trifecta. In my experience, his gravitas, gravitas, thoughtfulness, and careful consideration of every issue was, for me, a model of how public officials should approach their responsibilities on boards. In addition, he always added a needed dose of critical thinking when needed, especially when the board was facing tough decisions or sorting through various options. I had the opportunity to discuss with others his candidacy two years ago for commissioner, and then this past year for village trustee. When people asked me what it was like to serve on a board with Dudley, I would say, quote, "Dudley chose his words very carefully, and when Dudley spoke, people listened," unquote. Dudley, I'm looking forward to your continued service as an incoming village trustee. I believe there is an opportunity to strengthen the relationships between elected officials on the park and village boards, and you will be in a unique position to do that. I think a stronger working relationship between the elected officials on these two boards will lead to concrete benefits for the entire community of Glencoe. Congratulations, Dudley, on taking the oath of office as village trustee, and I look forward to the next chapter of your community's service," and that was Andre's comment."
Wow, thank you, Mr. Lerman, and congratulations, Dudley. We'll try to keep up with you. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comments to glencoe meeting@villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting, and written comments should be brief, and in any event, limited to 400 words. The next part of this meeting is reports of the village president, and since this is my first meeting, it isn't a time for a lengthy speech from me, and I hope there won't be any of those, but I do want to offer some brief thank yous. First, thank you to the village caucus for the vote of confidence in choosing me as its candidate for president, and to the voters of Glencoe for electing me. Voting once every two years isn't hard, but serving on the caucus is time-consuming and important. The caucus has been good for Glencoe for many years, so on behalf of the village, I thank the members of the caucus. Second, thanks to the people who have helped me prepare to be village president so I can hit the ground running. I'll mention only a few of them. Village manager Crowley, former manager Harlow, President Levin, and former President Felton. Thanks to all of them. Third, thank you. I've been on the zoning board for more than a decade as a member and then chair. Although most residents never see the zoning board, when they do, the subject is their homes, so it couldn't be more important. The zoning board hasn't made everyone happy. That's impossible. But I'm proud of and grateful to the zoning board members for their service. So thanks to the members of the zoning board, and just as important, thanks to the village staff who work with them, Tavor Baxter and Rich McGowan. Fourth, thanks to the members of the village board I will be joining. They and the truly superb staff that village manager Crowley has assembled have brought the village to the excellent place it's at now. I'm grateful for the work they've done, and I'm honored to be able to serve with them. Of course, I won't be serving with all of them. The caucus has term limits, so after eight distinguished years on the village board, Barbara Miller is stepping down. Barbara's out of town for her daughter's wedding, and she can't participate tonight, but there will be much more about Barbara at the next village board meeting. I also won't be serving with President Levin, who's done a great job leading the village for the last eight years and has served the village for many years before that. You'll be hearing more about that tonight. Let me just say that I am proud to have been part of the Levin administration as chair of the zoning board. Larry will be a hard act to follow, and I'll have his phone on speed dial. My last thanks are to the residents who volunteered to serve the village on our various boards and commissions. Phil Crowley and I have been interviewing volunteers, many more than we have positions for. And every one of them, every one, is a credit to the village. And finally, let me say that I am excited to serve as village president. I will work with the village board and staff to preserve what's best in our inclusive village and to make improvements where we can. As efficiently as possible, we'll provide the services residents expect. We'll maintain our infrastructure, and we will maintain our world-class responsive staff. We won't be able to make everyone happy all the time, but in Glencoe, the government is here to help. Thank you. The next item is consideration of an extension of the village president's Declaration of Emergency. The current declaration signed immediately following my swearing-in can be extended past its seven-day term only by action of the board of trustees. The village manager and I recommend that the declaration be extended, and therefore, I request a motion to approve the extension of the Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular special or emergency meeting of the board of trustees. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There is. Thank you. Village manager Crowley, could you please take a roll call?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trust Avery.
Yes.
The motion has carried. Alright, the next items are our regular business, and the first item of our regular business is consideration of a resolution honoring former village president, Lawrence R. Levin.
Actually, President Rowan, I'm sorry, I think you skipped over one item, which is the consideration of village president appointments.
Oh, I did. You know, we're gonna get the bugs out.
No problem.
We, I mean me, I apologize. There are some appointments to make. All those people that village manager Crowley and I have been interviewing. So the next item is consideration of the village president appointments to official village positions and commissions. And Phil, you wanna go through that list?
Steve, do we need to read each of those names into the record, or can that be approved?
The names are included as part of the agenda. They were published as part of the agenda, so you can, you can indicate, President Rowan, that you are making the appointments of the individuals on the agenda, on the memo, and then seek a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Elrod. The various appointments are, have already been written and submitted, so I request a motion to approve the appointments as written.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Phil, if you could please take a roll call.
Certainly. Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trust Avery.
Yes.
Motion passed.
The motion has carried, and I congratulate all of the appointments. And for the volunteers, you have a lot of hard work, and we're very grateful that you're taking up this obligation. Now, regular business. I'm sorry about jumping the gun, and the first item is consideration of a resolution honoring former village president Lawrence R. Levin. And I need a copy of the resolution to read.
I will bring you one. One second.
Okay. Thank you. What I'm holding in my hand is a resolution honoring former village president Lawrence R. Levin. Whereas Lawrence R. Levin, a lifelong Glencoe resident, has had a distinguished career in public service starting in 1965, when, as when he served as a clerk for the Fifth Circuit United States Court of Appeals, and whereas Lawrence R. Levin most recently served the village of Glencoe as its village president between 2013 and 2021, and provided exceptional leadership to the community in a professional, selfless, and honorable way. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin, in his capacity as village president, represented Glencoe at the Northwest Municipal Conference from 2009 to 2021, as a board of directors member, as well as co-chair of the conference's Legislative Committee and Executive Committee member from 2013 to 2021. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin, also in his capacity as village president, was co-chair of the North Shore Council of Mayors, member of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning Council of Mayors Executive Committee, member of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and village representative to the Illinois Municipal League. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin further served as a village trustee, finance committee member, and plan commission co-chair from 2009 to 2013, and Glencoe Golf Clubhouse Task Force Committee Chair and Golf Course Development Committee Member from 2009 to 2010. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin provided special legal counsel to the village from 1993 to 2001 and was a vital member of the village's Commercial and Economic Development Task Force, Forces, and Village Developmental Board between 1997 and 1998. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin served on the village's Susquehatchampteneo Planning Committee and presided over the village's 150th Anniversary Celebration in 2018 and 2019. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin guided the village to uphold and continually reaffirm its prestigious AAA standard and poor's bond rating, the highest credit rating that can be earned by an organization which came as a direct result of sound financial management, prudent and sustainable decision-making, and strategic planning. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin oversaw countless operational and organizational achievements, including the completion of two comprehensive and wide-ranging strategic plans, the Downtown Tune-Up and Active Transportation Plan, creation of the Glencoe Sustainability Task Force and planning and construction of the world-renowned Writers' Theater. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin ensured through his leadership as village president continued success of the village in funding its long-term capital investment needs through successful passage of two bond referenda and prudent use of village resources to ensure over $20 million in investment in Glencoe's critical water, sewer, roadway, and sidewalk infrastructure throughout the community. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin was a champion of collaborative partnerships and intergovernmental, governmental relationship building with the in-and-outside Glencoe, leading to better cooperation, more effective government, and significant cost savings to Glencoe residents. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin fostered, cultivated, and improved vital community partnerships between the village and other Glencoe organizations, including Writers' Theater, Family Services of Glencoe, Friends of the Green Bay Trail, Glencoe Community Garden, Glencoe Youth Services, Glencoe Junior High Project, and the Glencoe Historical Society. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin and fostering these partnerships contributed significantly to the successful relocation of Frank Lloyd Wright's Sherman Booth Cottage, maintaining Glencoe's status as having the third-highest number of Wright-designed structures in the world. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin supported an organizational culture which places the highest emphasis on excellent municipal service delivery manifested in the village earning national recognition for outstanding achievement in the delivery of services to residents as a recipient of the ETC Institutes Leading the Way Award. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin, in addition to his village service, has contributed his time and talent and service to the broader Glencoe community through the Glencoe Union Church and other volunteer organizations. And whereas Lawrence R. Levin, as village president, sought to ensure that all who lived in, worked in, and visited our community were heard, welcomed, engaged, and made to feel at home in Glencoe. The community he loved so much through both his leadership and the village's adoption of the welcoming and inclusive community pledge. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the village president and board of trustees of the village of Glencoe, Illinois, express on behalf of all the citizens of the village of Glencoe their tremendous appreciation to Lawrence R. Levin for his exemplary service and dedication to the Glencoe community during his decades of service to the village and other fundamental Glencoe organizations. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this proceeding and that an executed copy of this resolution inscribed with the signature of the village president and bearing the corporate seal of the village of Glencoe, as attested by the village clerk, be presented to Lawrence R. Levin. So I think what that means is that we should have a roll call. But maybe we need a motion first. We need a motion. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I heard a second. Alright. Phil, could you do a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trust Avery.
Yes.
The motion has carried. And we have, in addition to this, some other things for President Levin. But should I sign this now and have it sealed, or does that come later? Okay. Alright, with.
We have a copy up there.
I'm holding it. I'm holding it. Should I sign?
There's a different copy. Hold on.
Okay. Alright, I am signing the resolution. President Levin, it is my honor to present to you this resolution.
Thank you very much. And it is a great honor to receive it from you.
Thank you very much.
And Jordan's gonna come take some pictures.
Okay, now, in addition, we have a plaque honoring your service as village president for the last eight years. As the gavel, which you didn't use to hit anybody with. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and then um in your honor, uh, the village has dedicated a bench on the Green Bay Trail that you've loved and improved over the years, and I believe there is a picture.
We're working on the picture.
Okay, we're working on, we're working on the picture.
In the meantime, let's do pictures if that.
Okay. So.
Right, wonderful, one, two. One, two, three.
And should we, let's do one with, uh, let's do one with, uh. Yes.
Wonderful. One, two, three. One, two, three, mother sideways.
Okay.
One, two, three.
Look on the screen.
There you go.
Thank you.
Before you leave, you're gonna have to do a little hike. So you can get to your bench. Um.
Thank you.
President Rowan, there are a few public comments um that I, I'm happy to read into the records, so Jordan doesn't have to do so as she runs all the way down back to her office.
Uh, please do.
Okay, so we've, we've received two additional public comments related to this agenda item. The first is from former village president and former village trustee Scott Feldman. Uh, and Scott writes, "As the only person who has had the privilege of serving on the Glencoe Village Board with both outgoing President Larry Levin and incoming President Howard Rowan, I want to express both my thanks to President Levin for his outstanding period of service to our community and my confidence that our community will be in very good hands under President Rowan. My best wishes to both of you." And the second uh is from uh former village trustee Dale Thomas and former Plan Commission Chair Karen Thomas. And uh they submitted the following. "Today, we join a grateful community honoring Larry Levin's service to the village of Glencoe. In Larry's most recent role as village president, and before that as a village trustee, he worked tirelessly on behalf of the entire community to make Glencoe the very best that it can be. This included representing and advocating for Glencoe before regional organizations and state government, closely collaborating with the village manager and staff across the many areas of village governance, and leading the village board in its work to set policy and make critical decisions impacting Glencoe's future. Now completing two terms as village president, Larry leaves a village which is energized, vibrant, economically robust, and committed to the greater good. He lives a community greatly enriched by his presence, his vision, his countless hours of service, and his example. Dale's six years of collaboration with Larry on the village board and Karen's ten years of collaboration with Larry, which were focused on the Glencoe Plan Commission, showed us that Larry not only leads, he also supports colleagues and staff. Larry makes time for everybody, and he loves to contribute to the public dialogue on the issues of the day. No issue is too large, no detail too small. We would never have been able to make our contributions to the village without Larry's selfless and unwavering support. Today, we honor his devotion to Glencoe and his lasting impact on the quality and integrity of community life. And we want to say personally, thank you, Larry. Thank you from our hearts. Thank you for your tireless work on behalf of the village. Thank you for your endless generosity. Thank you for your friendship. We treasure all of it. Respectfully submitted Dale and Karen Thomas."
Wonderful. Thank everybody for all of these tremendous things. I, I had not expected all of this this evening, and it has touched me very deeply, so I thank you all for this.
Um, are there any further comments about the unbelievable service to the village of our outgoing village president?
President Rowan, let me just check one more time. I think we have all of the very kind comments, and we do. Yes, there are no more.
Uh, and Jordan, do we have any comments at all, even on a different subject that were submitted via email during the meeting?
No, we do not.
Okay. Um, that covers uh all of the public agenda. Um, I believe that we are gonna have a closed session. So uh before we do, let me, let me just say, I, I said a few words about um Larry, and it's been my pleasure to be a member of the Levin administration on the zoning board, where I think we handled things the way you wanted us to and the way the citizens wanted us to. As I said, this is gonna be a very hard act to follow. A little annoyed about that, but um you've left us in good hands, so thank you. Um, and I, I can't believe you're gonna move to Texas. You, you know, how is it possible to leave Glencoe, but I congratulate you on. And with that, I request a motion to move into closed session for the purpose of discussing uh the following under the Illinois Opens Meeting Act, uh, section two C one Employment Matters, and section two C eleven pending litigation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I think I heard a second.
We have a second, yeah, from trustee Hallwax.
Could you?
President Rowan, before, before the roll's taken, I just want to remind the trustees, you received a separate link from me for the closed session. Give me a couple minutes. I'm moving to a different room to take the closed session. But make sure you go into that, get, exit out of this link, go into that link after the roll call.
Okay. Um, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdonk. Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
We'll see everyone in a few moments.
The motion has carried. Thanks very much, and thanks again, Larry.
Oh, Larry, that was a beautiful night. Well done, Howard. Well done.
Thank you.
I have to go set this up, so I'm running down.
Should I be there too, or I should stay here? Okay.
I gotta run downstairs too, because I can actually.
Okay.
The reason I'm going down is why? Well, I think because it's not gonna be real easy for you guys, and you can stay up here. I think it's, if you can, if the headphones are working for you.
Seems it's working.
It says closed session. Oh, we'll resume at the conclusion. Okay, so we're there where we need to be.
So now the uh looks like you're on it and say I've been directed to adjourn with.
Um I'm 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 the president Howard Rowan and I've been directed to return the public meeting. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Perfect.